All right, I'd like to call this July 18th, 2013, Cookeville City Council Meeting to Order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson, Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Mayor Swallows.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epp.
Here.
Councilman Albright.
Here.
Four present, one absent.
Thank you. Would everyone please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right, before we get started tonight, we are going to recognize a special group of people, and I would say a special department in the city, but that would be said a little bit short because there were others involved. And this is an award that the, it's a GIS award that our GIS department won, and it's the Cookeville-Putnam County GIS Council. The council, it's a joint effort between the city, 911 EMS, and Putnam County. The council was formed to create a process to share information among the agencies, reduce data duplication, and create a backup system for the GIS data. GIS, or geographical information system, for the people that don't know, is a mapping technology that is used across the world and is very instrumental for communities in planning and providing services such as property boundaries, emergency services, and utilities. This local group was chosen from over 100,000 people, or 100,000 groups, so that speaks pretty high for the achievement and innovation that they have. Now, the collaborative effort has been in the making for years. It began in 2003 and is successful due to the dedication, hard work of all the intergovernmental departments. Anybody out there that has dealt with government knows how hard interdepartmental government work is. But, we've done it. I won't say "we have," you guys have. And that's, that's, that's pretty awesome. There's a picture of everybody over here on the, on the screen. But, you know, we're proud of the city staff, which Planning and Codes Department, Engineering, Public Works, Water Quality Control, Electric, Gas, Fire Police, and the partners we have with Putnam County 911 and EMS, and Property Assessors Department, and the Planning Department. But this is just an amazing award. And if everyone here that was involved with this GIS council, would they please stand? Thank you. We, we have, we've always said, everybody up here have, we've said that, that, you know, we have a phenomenal staff from department heads on down, and you guys do an excellent job. And, I mean, you make us look good. You make the city look good, really, is what you do, and the entire area. I've been in several meetings, regional-type meetings, and, and the one thing that sticks out, not only just in Putnam County, but in the, the region, is how well the cities and counties work together. And, of course, it's very true here in Putnam County, but it's also true in a few other counties around us, and how they work. We work with them at the same time. So, kudos, good job. We appreciate everything you guys do. Thanks for putting in extra work. There are also a few people that couldn't be here. Randy Porter, head of EMS 911, he, he sends his condolences. He wishes he could be here, but he had other prior engagements, so he couldn't be here as well. All right, well now we'll get started with the meeting. Consider, item one, consider approval of agenda as presented. Do you have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All vote.
Yes, votes, motion carries.
You're too late, Randy.
There's Mr. Randy Porter. Okay, let's start this all over.
Mr. Mayor, can I say something? I'm glad, Randy, I'm glad you're here, because when you, when we start, when you started this GIS stuff, I remember, I was on the commission when this started, and if I remember correctly, it was a little bit of a tough pill to swallow, because it, it costs the money. And, but you, in particular, did a great job in explaining that to, to the commissioners to demonstrate the value that this had, not only for the county, but also for the Cookeville, Putnam County, and the region. And not, not only for that, for actually the residents of this area. And you did a great job of persuading us, because we ended up voting for it, and, and this is the end result of the hard work of you and, and all the other, all you folks has, has been demonstrated in this, this great award. And I appreciate the time and effort you guys did, and especially appreciate in 2003 you guys deciding to take this step and convincing the, our selected officials that this was, this was worthy, and it has been. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. You've got some great folks here. They have been a joy to work with, they really are.
Absolutely. Well, I'm glad you're here, because I remember, because you were the county guy, you were the county guy that presented to us, and I appreciate that, Randy, so.
I try.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry to interrupt.
Glad you made it, though, Randy. Old business, item two, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on June 20th, 2013. Do you have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
All right, on to new business. Item three, consider resolution 130707, authorizing the participation in the TML Risk Management Pool Safety Partners Loss Control Matching Safety Grant Program. Sponsor is Ms. Gail Fowler.
Mayor and council, this resolution would authorize application for the Safety Partners Loss Control Matching Grant through the TML Risk Management Pool, and that the city would be authorized to provide a matching sum of $2,059.19 to serve as a match for the monies provided by the grant if it is awarded. It does, the maximum reimbursement of the grant is $2,000, so it's the 50% matching funds for the purchase of employee safety equipment and training. If awarded, these purchases would include 16 hours of required OSHA training at a cost of $2,000, two flammable liquids storage cabinets, $1,463.30, three emergency IR stations at 595-89. Those would be placed in two parts maintenance buildings and in our facilities maintenance shop, providing safety for 30 employees. The required, OSHA required training will be provided for 162 employees in the departments of Public Works, Water Quality, Wastewater, Gas, Maintenance, and Electric. That is annual training that's required and would be provided either way, but we had the opportunity to get a little bit of this money to help offset those costs. Total price of the purchases would be $4,059.19, city's portion, $2,059.19, and I'd respectfully request your approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Do you have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Thank you for getting the grant.
As an insurance guy, I appreciate the loss control efforts that the city makes.
We hope, we hope it helps.
It's very important. All vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item four, consider approval of additional design services to existing contract with Clinton Engineering for the Rails for Trails Phase One project. Sponsor is Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, city recently held a public meeting with the residents that lived along the proposed trail, the Heritage Trail along the National Eastern Railroad Track. As a result of the meeting, several of the citizens had expressed some concerns where it was located, so we thought it might be best to shift the trail to the other side of tracks in certain locations to try to alleviate those concerns. And to do that, our engineer needed to redesign a little over two miles of that trail. He's given us proposal to do that design work for $29,625, and I would request your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Excuse me. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments from the council?
I'd just like to make a comment. Public's usually talking about the government, just kind of rolls in and does, just does what they want, but we have responded to the concerns that the people came in. We actually, you, Melinda, Mayor, Councilman Connie, all right over there, Jim Shipley, we walked the trail and saw where it was going to interfere possibly with people and their boundaries. And the flexibility in using the engineering to change this so it wouldn't be right on top of some people, I think it showed that we had concern how it was going to affect people, and we're just like, we're not going to steamroll over people. I think it's going to be an asset to our community, the Rails for Trails, but the way, if you just drew it on the map, the way it was originally, it was going to interfere. And this is a green project, and the number of trees that we saw that it was potentially going to cut down was just staggering, and those were quite large trees. So I commend you and the rest of us for going out there and physically looking and having the ability to change what was originally, to make it more friendly toward the people of Cookeville. Thank you.
A couple of things I wanted to point out. First off, we decided to do that at about 10:00, 10:30 one day, and that's, I wish we would have done that at about 7:00 AM or 7:00 PM, if we ever do that again, because it was really, really hot walking that thing. But anyway, it, it did really, it opened our eyes, you know, I know here at the city, we try to do the best we can when, when we have projects like this, to make it the less, least, least amount of disruption as we can. And, you know, when you're, when you're mapping it on the railroad right-of-way, there's only so much you can do. And so, on paper, it looked like that was a great idea, but once we walked it, I mean, what Councilman Woodford said, I mean, it was like we would be clear-cutting our rainforest. I mean, there were, there were a lot of old trees for it to be a green project. It was, that was going to be, it was going to be pretty, pretty devastating, I felt. So we made a lot of, of pretty easy changes after we physically walked it, though, and realized that those changes could be made. So, the thing that jumps out to me is, you know, the lump sum of $29,000 seems like a lot, but the net effect, I feel like that we get from changing this trail from where it was to where it's going to be is, is way more than $29,000. I mean, way more than $29,000. The disruption to properties, the trees we would have to clear-cut, even a garden. There was a garden we were going to have to probably take out if we didn't change this. And that's, you know, somebody's been, that's sweat equity that somebody's put into that thing for a long time, so this is a good move. It's a really good move. And we appreciate you, you know, you know, you guys said we need to walk the trail, and appreciate you guys bringing that up, and everybody going out and doing it, so.
Well, I appreciate the people that came to the public meeting and let their concerns be known, because then that was something that we could go take a look at, and, and with your guidance and Melinda, you know, leading us through that, it was very informative and something that we were able to do something about.
Yeah, something we were able to respond to.
That's very true, because I mean, that's, we want input on, on projects, any project that we do, but, but especially when it's going to affect somebody's property, we want to know. I mean, we, you know, there's just five of us up here, plus department heads, you know, so I mean, there's always, there's more people out there with more ideas, too, so we always, we like to hear that, because we do try to do whatever we can to accommodate those concerns, so. Appreciate everybody's hard work on this. All vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item five, consider awarding bids for annual and semi-annual materials. Sponsor is Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, we recently opened bids on several of the materials we used throughout the year. I would recommend the low bidder of any specs on each of those items.
All right, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Seeing none? All vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Item six, consider appointment to the Cookeville Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees, and I would like to make a motion to nominate Mr. Bob Duncan.
Second?
Second, all right. Questions, comments?
Bob is very active in the community. He has served, I don't know how many years, on the county commission. He's active in his church. I think he'll make a very good board member for the hospital.
I've known him since he's moved back to Cookeville in the mid-'70s, both on a professional and a personal basis. He's an excellent choice, and very proud that he's willing to do this.
Mr. Mayor, and I've, I've had the opportunity to serve with Mr. Duncan as a county commissioner, and saw his, and saw his work in, in delicate situations, difficult situations, complicated situations, and he has been able to handle each, each and every of those situations in a way that is, is outstanding. And I, I can't, I can't give enough, use, I can't get, I can't give enough credit to him being a part of the hospital board. It's going to be, it's going to be a definite win for Cookeville Regional Medical Center, and I, I heartily will vote for him in that position.
I've had a chance to serve with him, Randy and I, with the 911 board, and he's a pretty thorough guy, isn't he?
He really is. Never argued with him about numbers.
Oh, no. You lose, quick.
Very detail-oriented.
Detail-oriented. So, this is, this is a win for the, for Cookeville Regional.
Yep.
This is an easy one.
Any other comments?
No.
All vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item seven, consider approval of change order number three on the water plant upgrade and expansion project. Sponsor is Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, I'm here seeking authorization for the city manager to execute a change order on the water plant project. It is, I think I put a total up here, change order number one at the project totaled $40,419, and that was early on the project. We approved, the council approved $30,000 of needed changes with city manager approval, and that was done, I think, a couple of months ago to address anything that came up in a timely manner, trying not to prevent, hold up the contractor. Change order number three is $21,510, and that's five days additional to the contract. I think I had a, let me see if I've got it on there. There was a typo in the plans, there were seven chlorinators, there was operational controls on and off on seven. There were supposed to be operator, operational controls on all seven, but it was shown as one, so that needed to be repaired. I think I've got your, the memo from WNO in there. They have requested 30-some days. We felt like five additional days was sufficient. So the changes to date, including the change order number three, if it's approved, would be $95,829, which is 1.3% of the project to date, and we feel like that's more, that's an adequate amount for that type of project, and we'd recommend your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
I know you're going to have, you know, change orders or things that run up, and when you have nearly a $7 million project, 95, 1.7, 1.37% is within margin. I know personally, my wife and I are in extensive remodeling, and if we get within 1.37%, we'll be very happy.
And this is probably not going to be the last, because we know of a few other items probably potentially hanging out there.
Not supposed to say that, Ronnie, here. Just, don't say that, just say, okay.
Projects like this with existing plants that are 40 years old, it's, things you run into, things happen.
Any other of our audience, Ms. Huddleston?
Yes. My name's Tim Huddleston, Vice President, WNO Construction Company. I'd like to take the opportunity to speak to you for just a second concerning this change order. The days requested by WNO when we originally submitted the proposal was 35 days, and of course, after recalculating and realizing the council meeting's July the 18th, by the time we get authorization to do the work, by the time we actually do the work, it won't be performed till about July the 27th. This issue first was identified July the 12th, and doing the arithmetic, we would request that those days be approved, not as five days, not as 35 as originally requested, but with additional time for approval and performing the work, we'd request it be 45 days. As I've made mention, Ronnie's very aware, we're, we're willing to do the work, negotiate the days at a, at a later date, as, as you say, there may be some more issues, and we go forward, we're willing to do the work, negotiate the difference between five days, 40 days, 45 days at a later date. And so I'd make that comment. And the second thing that that brings to attention is we've already had some other requests where we, again, disagreed on number of days that we're due, due for some additional delays. So, the reason I bring that up is, there's a contractual, a contractual clause which says that the contractor will not be paid any further progress payments after the contract date expires, and considering the additional days approved. So as you can see, the day issue is a twofold issue. It's number one, what days will we, will we be delayed, that we will be paying liquidated damages? And then the second issue, if we don't receive another payment until we reach substantial completion, then we'll be looking at 77, let me see here, $777,547.06 if the work performed without a progress payment. So, I would ask the council tonight to approve this change order, to say that the days would be negotiated at a later date, and to please waive the clause of the contract. And I've got a copy of it here, be glad to pass a copy to everyone, but it's a particular clause of the paragraph, of the specification, section 01, 2976, Part 1, General, Paragraph 1.8, Subparagraph E. Got a copy of it here from the specifications, and be glad for you to all see that. And we just ask you to take that into account if you consider the number of days awarded today, and then considering that there are days that we are requesting that we're not in agreement, the impact of that, that that particular clause be waived. I have a letter here that kind of goes into some more description, be glad to give copies of that, and, let me make sure that's all that. And I, thank you very much, and be willing to answer any questions.
So, you're asking, instead of 35 days, to make it 45 days?
Yes, sir, now that we've realized the July 18th approval date, then authorization to do the work, then to get the work done.
Ronnie, how does that affect us?
We've made our recommendation to the council, five days, we think's reasonable, a reasonable amount of time.
Does it make, going from 35 days to 45 days, I mean...
In order to do that, Mr. Mayor, we're going to need, we'll need somebody to make a motion, if there's a motion and a second, so.
There's a motion on the floor and a second right now, is it?
Right.
They'll need to make an amendment, is that right? That's, it's correct?
Correct.
Okay. Then someone will need to make an amendment to the motion, and someone will need to second that, so. Looking forward, if somebody wants to do that. Not, and we don't have any discussion.
I'm guessing, I'm wondering how, how that affects us, going from 35 days to 45 days, giving them 10 extra days?
No, it's giving them 30 extra.
40. Going from five days to 45 days.
It's 40 days, yes.
To 40 days.
And, you know, we, we would ask, and we bring that to your attention and request, because, you know, we consider this would be a concurrent delay. We acknowledge as a contractor that the project is not complete. We acknowledge that there are issues where there's days that we are responsible for that delay, but there's also changes that have been made, and, you know, I think typically the description is called concurrent delays, and in concurrent delays, contractors aren't penalized. So, like I said, that can be discussed and negotiated at a later date, we just ask that the implication of that subparagraph of the specification be waived at this time so that we can just continue with progress payments. Mayor, we've had, I've been in communication with the city attorney about that, and we presented WNO with a letter saying that we would be happy to make some payments to their subs if it was holding up, but it wouldn't waive their rights to any days, and we had argued about the days at the end of the project. And I haven't received any comment back from WNO, I guess, until right now, so. And if they're willing to sign that letter, Mr. Rader may have some points. We drafted that letter and sent it to them, and thought it was a good letter, and, reasonable.
Well, and Ronnie has a copy of the letter that was just drafted, and he just now has it in possession. He's not had a chance to review it or anything like that, but a portion of that letter addresses the offer that was made, and the offer was made that if we would prepare a new pay request, that we would limit that pay request to only work performed by our subs and vendors, then it would be considered. And that seemed acceptable to WNO Construction Company. But then later on in the letter, it says, "with copies of documentation showing subcontract amounts were completed." And as a paragraph in the letter that you just received, let's see if it's in here. Okay. "We appreciate but decline the city's offer to make payments for only subcontractors and vendors if WNO will produce accounting documents." And these documents from WNO's part, that contains proprietary information we cannot share, that would become public record in such a competitive industry.
Mr. Mayor, may I make just a suggestion? We don't, of course, we don't have, we don't have a motion, a motion to amend, so we don't really, we're really not in discussion phase of this, of this request, but might I suggest to my fellow council members that, you know, rather than trying to make a decision here in about, in about five minutes with the presentation, and certainly I appreciate, I appreciate your, your concerns with your, with your corporation, with your construction company, but I, as a council member, I guess I just need a little time to digest this. I need our administrative staff to take a look at it, I need to take a look at your requests, and I need to take a look at both of those areas of whatever the, I guess, word conflict is, but, but take a look at that for me to make a good decision. So I'm not going to be very prepared to make, to make a decision, and if someone votes to make an amend, or makes a motion to amend, I probably won't, I will probably vote no on that, just because I'm not prepared for that. I guess, may I suggest that, that, that WNO get in, get in contact with, with our administrative members involved, and then this city manager, and Ronnie, and with your requests, and then have them digest that, and then also contact us, so we can kind of come, come to a conclusion with this. I'm not saying that I don't want to disregard your requests, but I, I'm not going to do the citizens of this, of the city very, very good stewardship by just voting on something that I kind of messed up in my head right now. So, I don't know if my other council members feel that way, but I would, I would, I would prefer if, if that, if it could happen this way, give me a little, give me a little time. I'd like, I'd certainly like to hear the rest of it, but...
Well, just the implication of WNO currently is already $500,000 worth of work performed that's not been paid.
But that will, it will be paid at some point in time, correct?
Correct. And also, this change order, if it's approved and it only has five days in it, then would WNO be interested, would WNO want to sign this change order for only five days whenever we think we've provided justification for 45 days?
Let me ask, so do you, the engineer says it'll take you five days to get this job done, and you say it takes you nine times that amount?
It didn't take me nine times. Yeah, I'll go over this time schedule with you if you'd like. June the 12th was when it was identified. June the 14th was when we had a telephone conversation to schedule a meeting. June the 17th was when the meeting was held. June the 19th was when we were given directions as to what to provide a price for. June the 25th was when we forwarded to them for approval. June the 27th was whenever we were told, no, we're not going to do that change, the city's going to do it themselves, and we'll have it done by July the 1st. That was some chemical feed controls. Then they decided not to do that chemical feed control, but to do just the scales. So, July the 1... So July the one, let me just skip on down, July the eighth, the meeting was held on-site where we were not given any written direction on how to proceed by the engineer or the city, but our subcontractors, vendors, and WNO, in conjunction, in conversation, decided that the scope of work to be performed would be this, and we provided a price for that, even though we still don't have a written description of what the request proposal's supposed to be, we've already given the price for that. Uh, July the ninth is when we submitted that request, um, July the eleventh, we received the letter that they're willing to approve it with only five days.
Does the work start?
June the twelfth.
Does the work start?
From June, from June the twelfth till, like I say, it'll be June, July the twenty-seventh, by the time we complete this work.
But that letter also addressed, I think, the other additional days that were being requested, because the work wasn't ready to be moved, in our opinion, engineer's opinion.
How many days will it take you to actually do it?
It's a matter of five days.
That's what I thought.
Right, to actually do the work, but the impact of not moving has impacted other work that hasn't been able to be performed because these controls existing are in the way. If they had been just moved, then the plant operators would not have had signals back on the control for the chlorination of the water for the city to cook.
When did you get the notice to proceed on this, this work involving the sixty-nine-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars? I mean, on this particular change order, when'd you get the notice to proceed on it? Did you say it'll only take you five days to do?
We haven't gotten, we haven't got authorization yet.
So if you get approval tonight, then you'll, it'll get, you'll get those, in those five days, you'll get that work done?
Well, we'll, no, we'll have the authorization, and then you have to plan, get the materials, get the subcontractors and vendors, some vendors that aren't on-site on a daily basis, schedule them to get them to the site. I'm only asking for, from Thursday to Monday, to be able to get the subcontractors and vendors to the site.
So how many days then to get those to the site and get the job done?
That's what I'm saying, if you're approved tonight, we schedule it tomorrow, we think we can have them on-site next week, and have it completed by the twenty-seventh. So from June the twelfth to July the twenty-seventh, forty-five days.
Oh, from tomorrow until...
Well, why would it be tomorrow if we've been held up since June the twelfth?
I'm just asking the days to actually do the work and mobilize and do the work.
Staff disagrees.
That's from tomorrow to...
There's provision for dispute resolution in our contract.
Mr. Mayor, I, I...
We can argue all night up here about details.
I'm, I'm almost prepared to call for, call for the question, uh, in order, in order to, uh, and I, I wanna hear all sides of this, I do, I really wanna hear all sides of this, but I, I think right now, uh, this is, that, that's more appropriate at a work session, for us, the opportunity for us to sit there and, and digest all this and get some paper in front of, 'cause I've just been handed this piece of paper right, right now, and I appreciate that, I really do, but for me to, to read that and go, okay, make a decision like that, is really, it's, it's, it's not very responsible on my part. Uh, so I, I would, I do wanna hear this, but I think this is, I just don't think it's the venue for that, and I would ask my council members for us to go ahead and vote on the motion, uh, the motion, and if this wants to come up on a work session, then I'd be very happy to hear that. I don't, I don't know if my other council members feel that way, but that's kinda what I'm thinking about right now.
I have to agree, I mean, I think this, this is, because we're talking forty-five and five, and, and I think we're starting from different points, maybe even then, so I'm a little, little confused, and I, and I'm gonna need to absorb it a little bit more too, but, uh, 'cause I don't wanna, I don't wanna do anything to hurt the company we're working with, and I sure don't wanna do anything to hurt the city. Um, so I guess, my question is, if we approve this change order, how would that hurt WNO immediately, or how would that hurt or help the city immediately, or if we turn it down tonight for more discussion, how does that hurt?
I think if you approve it tonight, they've gotta proceed on with the project, and then we argue about days at the end of the project.
If that's a part of how the change order's written, WNO would accept that, but we would appreciate the work session such that we can get progress payments...
Yeah, that's no problem.
Re-initiate.
That's no problem.
I would be happy to do that, I mean, I, I wanna, I wanna be a good, I wanna be a good neighbor. WNO's been a member of this community for a long time, for, for a long time, done a lot of work for us.
Done some great work for us.
And, and I wanna, I wanna continue that, but I, I just, I'm, for me to vote, I would feel irresponsible, and I would be happy to, happy to, to do that, if that's...
Well, I thank you so much, but I do wanna make sure that you are aware, this has been going on since June the twelfth, so it's not dropped into your lap, our lap, just within the month of July.
And we disagree.
That's okay. Okay. That's all right.
We can move forward, but we'll, okay.
Thank you so much.
With a motion and approval, any other discussion about the change orders? About the change order?
Uh, do you not need to amend the change order to...
No.
...agree about the days later?
No, it, all we're requesting is to prove the twenty-one-thousand-something dollars and add five dollars, five days to the, to the contract time, but...
Right.
Well, I think it's apparent we're gonna be arguing about days at some point, so...
We're gonna be arguing about days at some point.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's fine.
Yeah.
I look forward, I look forward to hearing the discussion, and hearing both sides, so I, I look forward to that.
Yeah, okay.
All vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
All right, on to item eight. Consider approval of engineering contract amendment number four, the water treatment plant project, sponsors Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Uh, Mayor, we had, uh, since the contract has, uh, wasn't completed on the contract completion date and the listed in the contract, we had to keep the engineers retained, and we had done a three-month contract extension with them. Uh, that three months, we thought the project would be over, the project's not finished, so we need to extend that contract at the current contract rates, and would like to just have that say until the project's completed. Now, there is provisions in the contract that no, assuming no additional days are added at the construction contract by change order or through negotiation with the contractor, the five-hundred-dollar-a-day penalty liquidated damage would cover these additional engineering fees, and we'd recommend approval.
Okay, a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Anything for the audience? Seeing none? All vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item nine, consider authorizing city manager to execute engineering contract to design modifications to the Booger Swamp Pumping Station and Forest Main, sponsors Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Are you gonna give us the history first? Is that what, no, no?
I'll let you do that. Or Mr. Littrell? You wanna come out here and do it?
Uh, we're seeking authorization to enter into a contract with CTI's, uh, engineering company. Uh, we're wanting to do a repair, replace some deteriorating components of that project that's basically reached the end of their useful life. Uh, the design fees, they're not to exceed sixty-thousand, seven-hundred dollars. Uh, the, the pump station's located out off of Dry Valley Road, uh, Buck Mountain Road is at this location. We are gonna replace about three-hundred-and-fifty feet of the forest main where it discharges into the gravity. I've thrown some pictures up, uh, you may be able to see them better on your screen, just, just how things are deteriorating in that type of atmosphere, uh, some stairs, uh, steel, uh, wall supports, where some bolts are broken, and, and those type of things, general, general cleanup and just repair of our infrastructure and trying to get it back up to current standards, and we'd recommend your approval.
The contract that's in my book is not the final version of the contract, so make sure the final version is signed when it's, gets approved.
I've got it and put it in, the one that would be signed by Jim, I, I didn't get one to get Kathy to put one in your book. We had a few modifications.
All right, drive motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Is this a budgeted item that you have?
Yes.
Also, the, this, the volume has increased significantly since nineteen-eighty-seven for this substation.
The volume coming into the station?
Yes.
Well, we've lost a lot of demand on that side of town from the Russell Stovers, the Aquitex, they were a million gallons a day, but all, all good has increased, they dump, they pump into this system too. So try, I don't, I don't know if I know the number, exact number, but we did lose some significant industrial clients on that side of town.
Have you had to go in and do anything like this before to this station?
No, this, this was put in, I think, in eighty, when did I say, eighty-seven? No, it's just trying to rehab it, get it back up to standards, we're good working condition, and we're trying to do that, just most of our stations just periodically go through and get them up to standards.
Yeah, good.
Okay. Anything else? All vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item ten, consider approval of engineering contract for hydraulic water modeling on the Fifteenth Street water tank and distribution system.
Mayor and council, we're seeking authorization of the city manager into, enter into an engineering contract with Consolidated Technologies to do a existing, to, to update an existing water model we currently have, to perform some analysis out on this Fifteenth Street tank area. Uh, we have budgeted, we budgeted in our long-range capital plan the last few years, it'll be one of the last tanks that we've had refurbished, we've refurbished Ashoney's tank and the pilot knob tanks, and this one's really in need of, of painting and, and, but, the way it, it floats on the hy, on the hydraulics of the system, uh, we think we either, we either have some hydraulic issues in the pipes, and I'll go back to that, if I can get back to it. Oop, blank. Previous. We've got a twenty, a thirty pipe, twenty-four, sixteen comes up, and then it necks down to a ten-inch pipe, and then there's some twelve in here, but we think there's so much demand coming from the Bangham utility area, we sell wholesale there, we sell wholesale two big meters, Bangham, all good sales here, and they sell on, over in County, and we have a lot of demand coming from this area. Uh, that has offset a lot of the Russell Stover water demand that we lost over the years in the Aquitex, but this, this pump, there, this tank doesn't float and almost empties in, in certain high-demand times, so we wanna run some modeling on that to see if we need to just upsize some lines and get the sixteen to feed it, and even if we do that, what happens to it? Uh, we don't wanna spend three or four-hundred-thousand dollars painting it, and then five or ten years from now decide we need to move it or upsize it, so we wanna look at that and get all that worked out. We may end up deciding it needs to be moved out to another location, it may need to be a million-gallon tank versus a half-million-gallon tank, and so that's what we're wanting to look at. Uh, there's a couple pictures, that's pictures of the tank, most people know, recognize the tank out by the high school, it's a checkerboard, it was checkerboard because of the airport, and that was a requirement, there was, uh, this is just some surface rush on, on the white part, and it's not in bad shape, but it needs a, it needs to be refurbished and painted.
What size of tank is it?
It's a half-a-million gallon.
Half-a-million.
Yeah, it was built in nineteen-sixty-one. And we'd recommend your approval.
Did you climb up there and take that picture?
That's what I was gonna ask.
Let me tell you a good story, when I first came to work here, there was a line on top, and they needed it changed, so I said, sure, I'll climb and change it, but when you climb up to the first bench, then you gotta climb around the bowl, and there wasn't any hook, so I'd have started climbing, and ran right into a big wasp nest about that big, and stopped and, and eased myself back down, and we finally ended up contracting somebody.
Good idea. A beekeeper?
Hmm?
A beekeeper?
Yeah.
I mean, did you climb, the, is something wrong with the ladder?
No.
Okay, well, there was an arrow pointed, rolling roof ladder.
Uh, I don't know.
If there's an issue, and you used it to climb up there, I worry about you.
They may be, it may not be attached properly, there're just little notes showing different things with, with the tank.
All right.
Those have to be inspected every five years, and we just have little notes attached, what's going on.
Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments?
It's great that we're, it's great that, I mean, I appreciate it, Ronnie, that we're gonna look at the mechanics of this first and, and see its usefulness, and how, how best to make it even more useful in the future, now and in the future, but, uh, we talked about this as council too, it'd be, it'd be really nice, once we figure that out, and we still, it's still useful, we, when we repaint it, it'd be nice to do something, a nice, a little better than a checkerboard.
Yeah, we would, I was wanting, just sitting there, being at the football stand and seeing it, it's so prominent, to put a cavalier or something on that backside if it stays there, and...
And I agree.
And try to keep everybody off of it from defacing it at some point.
All right, anything else? All vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Orange and white sure does look awful rusty, I don't know.
Black and gold wouldn't show.
I think, I think that...
Mayor.
Tell us.
Let it go, man, let it go.
All right, this is a, a portion of the meeting, we open up the floor, the citizens and our delegations, anybody who would like to come forward and speak, say anything they would like, good, bad, ugly. All right.
County?
No. I will mention, uh, school is gonna start, I guess, next week, I believe, in Putnam County, and just wanted to remind everyone, uh, in the mornings and the afternoons, watch a little closer, drive a little slower, maybe. Is that right, Major Maxwell?
Right.
Just watch the school of children, please, keep that in consideration.
Is that it?
That's it.
This meeting's adjourned.